Welcome back. We are just coming from executive session. And so I would like to call the meeting in order again. And for verbal attendance, for board members, starting first to my left, please state your name.
Eva Gilio.
Scott Nelson.
Alex Kamalovich.
Julie Moon.
Jessica Pritzker.
And that's all of us tonight. The other two couldn't make it. And just to remind everybody, Julie is our secretary pro tem. Congratulations on the promotion.
Thank you.
All right. I would... Oh, wait. What do we have here? Communications? Oh, no, approvals. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved, Pritzker.
Second, Moon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Now we have the approval. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the regular and executive session minutes.
So moved, Gilio.
Second, Kamalovich.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the board self-evaluation executive session meeting minutes.
So moved, Kamalovich.
Second, Pritzker.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're at our superintendent comments section.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to anyone who's streaming in this evening. For the history buffs, in 2007, the Illinois House of Representatives declared November 15th as School Board Members' Day. A day in District 34 that we're proud to acknowledge, although it was a couple of days ago. We're still proud to acknowledge it. Our school board members wear many hats. They're education leaders, policymakers, contract negotiators, fiscal stewards, and you serve as the elected emissaries of this community. But we also know that you are community members and parents and volunteers and have families of your own. You spend multiple hours each month on important district work, attending meetings, and assume other advisory responsibilities, often unseen to the larger community. I want to personally thank all seven of you, five this evening, but we'll get to the other two. There's no escaping this, for your service to this community, to the students who go to school here. And I would encourage those in the community who are watching, and we'll make sure we promote this, that when they see you out and about in the community, whether it's Jewel or the hardware store or wherever it is, to thank you for your service. And we do have a small token of our appreciation for you in the bag, along with a certificate suitable for framing if you choose to do so. And we thank you very much. So let's give them a hand.
Thank you. I do appreciate these handwritten notes from students. It's really informs us what our job is really about. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Now we'll move along to our consent agenda. We have the 25075 Personnel Report, the 2507... Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped audience comments. This is the first opportunity for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the board can submit a comment card available at the check-in table and give it to the Executive Director of Communications and Strategic Planning. Do we have any comments?
We do not.
Okay. Now we'll move along to our resolutions. 25075 Personnel Report, the 25076 Payroll Warrants, the 25077 Vendor Warrants, and the 25078 Press Issue 119. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Gilio.
Second, Moon.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Gilio.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll do our consideration of other resolutions. We have the 25079 Health Life Safety 10-Year Report. Steve?
Welcome up here, Steve. We've got the first two agenda items, so you can get comfortable and you can welcome our guests. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we want to give you a little presentation on the 10-year Health Life Safety Report. ISBE requires school districts to perform this audit every 10 years, identifies deficiencies that the school district is responsible for repairing over the next few years. So tonight with me, I have Troy Kerr with FGM Architects and Michelle with FGM Architects. I didn't want to mispronounce your last name, so... Okay. Anyway, so they're here to start the presentation and answer any questions if you have any questions.
All right. So tonight, as Steve mentioned, we're just going to go through a little bit of what the HLS process looks like and why we do it and what the deliverables are. And then we'll talk a little bit about the findings that are specific to District 34. All right. So the history of the HLS process. So just a fun fact, this image is what Lyon Elementary School looked like when it opened. So this is a picture of your school. All right, next slide, please.
It looked like that just a few years ago.
Sure did. All right. So the HLS process grew out of a number of different things, most of which happened prior to 1958. So before 1958, there was no true life safety code for public schools in the state of Illinois. There were a couple of laws that applied to school buildings. In 1874, the Illinois Public Egress Act was passed. That said that if you had a gathering space that the public could come into, doors needed to swing out from it. That was pretty much the only law that applied to any big building in the state. And then in 1915, the state gave the Superintendent of Public Instruction, which was the precursor to today's ISBE, the authority to issue specifications to govern minimum standards in public schools. And again, that was pretty much it. So in 1958, on December 1st, the Our Lady of the Angels Fire happened in the city of Chicago. That is the third most deadly fire that has ever happened in a public school or in a school, it wasn't a public school, in the country. And obviously, the state of Illinois freaked out. And so they said, okay, we need to have a set of standards to prevent something like this from ever happening again. And so that led them to create and enforce life safety codes for the very first time. Now, they said, we can't really enforce anything on a private school, but we can do it on a public school because the superintendent of the state has the authority to do that. So they mandated that not only would life safety codes come into effect, but that every public school in the state would be surveyed for compliance with those life safety codes and that that would happen every 10 years. And thus was the beginning of the 10-year Health Life Safety Process. This is a little snapshot of your buildings. This is a chart that we created to show how they line up with code. And what this is showing you is that the majority of your building's stock was constructed prior to the advent of those life safety codes. So what that means is that most of the original buildings went through every single phase of the Health Life Safety Survey that has happened in the state. And then most of the additions were built after that point. And then obviously, Atiya was the most recent of the full school construction that happened well within the advent of life safety codes. So that means that for the majority of the buildings here in District 34, less Atiya, this Health Life Safety Survey that we performed is the fifth time that that has happened in these buildings. So talking a little bit about process and deliverables. Next slide. So architects and engineers go through your buildings, and we survey them for compliance with the life safety code that was in place at the time that each portion of the building was built. That means that in buildings like in District 34, there could be up to five different life safety codes that we're looking at for each of these buildings. So when we note deficiencies, we'll mark them up on a plan, and we will establish an approximate cost to address those deficiencies.
We assign the priorities based on how severe the deficiencies are. So when you look at the deficiencies that are found, Priority A items need to be addressed basically immediately, within one year of filing the HLS with ISBE. Priority B items, you get five years to complete corrections. And Priority C items are largely recommended, typically unfunded through the HLS amendment process and are something to keep in mind when you're doing future work.
So oftentimes, we roll Priority C items into maintenance work that we might be doing otherwise. And so once all that's done, our final reports are uploaded through a platform called IWAS that is run by the ISBE. And it will create a statement of board authorization that we'll bring to you to act on and sign. And then that'll get uploaded with the state, and then that'll be off to the state's reviewer to determine if they agree with everything that is on the list. So the deliverables that we create are essentially three different things. We create safety reference plans, which are just what they sound like. They are floor plans and a roof plan and a site plan of each building that describe the buildings, what they're made of, and what the health life safety systems in the building are, as well as major utility shut-offs, things like gas and electric. Because a copy of this goes to the ISBE, but a copy also goes to the police department and the fire department so that they understand how to address emergencies in your buildings. We create a narrative for each of the buildings. So it's a written document that essentially says the same thing, what the building is made out of, its construction type, its life safety systems, et cetera. And then we create the budget information that goes along with the deficiency list. All right. So as I mentioned, this is now, for most of your buildings, the fifth time that somebody has gone through. It's the first time that we have gone through, but the fifth time total that somebody has gone through. And so the majority of the things that we found are relatively minor, as one would hope. We've done a lot of work here in the district. And so what we have found are primarily things that are at the end of their useful life, things that are wearing out and need to be replaced, and a few minor issues to be repaired. I would note that there were two buildings that got kind of a light touch in the referendum or no touch really at all.
Or no touch.
And that would be here at Atiya and at the district office. And so not surprisingly, the majority of the items that we found were at those buildings. So all told, again, this is pretty minor. We do a lot of these Health Life Safety Surveys throughout the Chicagoland area. This is pretty minor, but you have about $30,000 worth of Priority A items that need to be addressed in a year. And then you have a higher amount of Priority Bs and Cs. So those will be structured out over five years to get addressed.
Just, I just want to throw in that the Priority A items, we're going to address ourselves in-house. They're relatively small. We're going to be able to knock those out ourselves. Any questions?
Is there a breakdown by building, especially for B? I mean, how much is, like, say, the district office?
We do have that. I didn't come prepared with that tonight. But we can send that to you.
What's, is there a next step instead of prioritizing? The reason why I'm asking is I don't know how much we want to do on the district office if we're looking at other options.
I mean, for immediate planning purposes, we're not planning to spend any money on the district office unless there's some type of an emergency that comes up.
Yeah. So typically, a Priority A item would be something that was an imminent life safety hazard. And so you would want to address that even if it was something you were, you know, a building you weren't planning to maintain long-term. But Priority B items, they do allow for that five-year window so that a district has the choice to do something different if they wanted to. And that would then close out the item or eventually get it addressed if they wanted to do that.
And I assume C will kind of just do opportunistically if we're doing something adjacent or similar.
Exactly.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming out tonight.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, can I ask for a motion and a second to approve the Health Life Safety 10-Year Report?
So moved, Pritzker.
Second, Kamalovich.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
I have a question first. I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, Mike.
Does that include the site work at the elementary buildings? Add those numbers?
We, yes. We did include the... Those numbers don't, but we added it to the report that we're sending in to the state.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Because I'm looking for additional funding mechanisms to take care of some network.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah.
Yeah. I would add on that note that the state recently kind of revamped the way that they look at Health Life Safety items. So historically, paving was not oftentimes approved by the ISBE. However, we have seen recently that there's been an uptick in approval of that. So things like the site work would be something we'll include for that. But they're not baked into those numbers, as Steve noted.
All right. Can I have a roll call?
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the 25080, Approval of the 2026 School Year Maintenance Grant.
Yes. Each year, ISBE offers a $50,000 maintenance grant that applies to capital projects. And it's a matching grant, so the district has to agree to match the 50,000. And this year, I'm in the middle of the application process, and one of the requirements is it needs board approval. So I'm here asking the board tonight to approve me moving forward with the application for the $50,000 maintenance grant.
Any questions? All right. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the 2026 School Year Maintenance Grant as presented?
So moved, Gilio.
Second, Moon.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Moon.
Aye.
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Now we have the 25081, 2025 Resolution to Approve the Tentative Tax Levy and Schedule a Public Hearing. Mike?
And so the information that you pay out in your packet is... Thank you. The information that you have in your packet is what we discussed the last time, last month with the presentation. The only difference and change that was made to the calculations was the existing EAV going up to 32%.
Oh.
And this is just the first step in the levy process.
Thanks. Any other questions? And we'll have a public hearing at our next meeting, correct?
Correct. Yes, this would authorize the public hearing as well and establish it.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented.
So moved, Kamalovich.
Second, Pritzker.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now I have a 25082, Resolution to Appoint the IMRF Authorized Agent.
Yes, that is authorizing Amina as the authorized agent. The authorized agent pretty much all oversees all of the securities and who has access to what parts of IMRF for reporting purposes. And then any communication would go to that person as well.
Is there any questions about that? Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved, Moon.
Second, Gilio.
Gabby, may I have a roll call?
Gilio.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Pritzker.
Aye.
Moon.
Aye.
Kamalovich.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we have the 25083, Resolution Authorizing Participation in Property Tax Proceedings.
For that particular one, that actually will be part of your packet for December 15th.
Okay.
So if we can table that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll table that. And could you just explain what this is exactly, too?
Gabby, is this the one that you put in here? I didn't see this one. Sorry. Okay. Yeah. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Yeah, this pretty much will just authorize the school district to levy taxes.
Oh, okay.
But like I said, this, I have, unless this is something that I'm not aware of, I think I have these documents actually in the levy for the 15th.
Okay. We'll do it at the 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
So save that 25083 for that one?
Yeah.
It's the last one anyway, so the number don't change, won't change. All right. Just shorten the meeting. Great.
Exciting, that there.
Now we move to our discussion section. We have the 2026-2027 Student Transportation and Building Use Fees. It's a full-mic presentation tonight, isn't it?
Well, I'm going to interject here.
Oh, good.
If you're not tired of hearing from me yet. Don't look now, but we are in the throes of planning for the 2627 school year. I mean, Kevin started his work with, you know, looking at staffing allocations already on a preliminary basis for next year. This is the time when we make decisions about setting our student fee structure. And this evening, for your consideration, is a recommendation that all fees increase by 3% with the exception of lunch prices, which are recommended to be increased by 25 cents, and milk prices to remain the same. So those are the two exceptions. The other fees, we're recommending a 3% increase. The backup sheet is included in your information for you to look at. And you may have picked out that some of the fees don't actually change due to rounding. So when we applied the 3%, you get a whole host of sort of odd numbers. So the rounding, for instance, for a current $6 fee, you know, if it rounded up to 17 cents, it's, we're going to round lower or whatever. Thank you. I knew you'd have it to the penny.
Yeah, I got that.
So that explains that. I should also note that, you know, not all fees are increased each year. We've had years where we haven't increased fees at all. We've had other years where certain fees have increased based on certain information that we have. During COVID, for instance, the fees were frozen, I think, for at least two years. So this is something that we do periodically. And the increases actually allow us to not then, in any given year, have a big increase to the fees. So we try to do it incrementally. It is also consistent with what CFAC has recommended in past years to, you know, help offset some of the budgetary costs that we have associated with really all of the items that you see on that sheet. I think also of particular note, this was the first year that we had a blanket field trip fee that was added for students, which gave each student two opportunities for field trips. There were also supply kits. This was the first year where we had a standardized supply kit that was provided to students in the K through 5 grade level. This didn't apply to middle school. And that helped with both efficiency and for, really for equity across the district. Those were the two main points that we try to keep bringing ourselves back to. We have received some feedback that, in terms of the logistics of the supply kits, that it went pretty smoothly. I mean, they arrived when they were supposed to. They were distributed as they were supposed to. There may have been some exceptions to that, I'm sure. But we have learned in the process that we need to go through those supply item lists again, that there were some items that were, in some cases, over-ordered and in other cases, under-ordered. It was all reconciled, you know, as these supplies were being used by students. So it didn't pose any problems. But to the extent that we can have a cleaner quote-unquote "list" from the beginning, we're going to make every attempt to do that. So with that, this was merely a discussion item. You'll see it again next month for approval. But this is the time of year we generally do that.
Well, I'm glad we're taking CFAC's recommendation again to analyze our fees on a yearly basis, especially with the way costs have gone up.
The other, oh, I'm sorry. The other thing I wanted to note was that next year is the final year of our full-day kindergarten fee. Because then it's mandated and we are no longer able to charge. So next year is the last year for that.
Yeah. The only other thing is that there was no change in the building use fees.
Thank you. That is something that we can come back to. We did not explore that, at least at this point. That's something that we've considered doing in the past, haven't recently. Don't really know what that actually generates us because we don't... There's not large-scale use of our buildings for charge in general. You know, we have an arrangement with the Park District that, you know, where they use the facilities, but at no charge. We have Wesley that uses classroom spaces and common area spaces through an agreement. And there is a charge structure with that that is something we can certainly revisit, but not a part of this recommendation.
And just for those who don't know, there is a fee waiver process.
Thank you. Nothing has changed with our fee waiver process. So students and families are eligible for reduced or free fees associated with any of these charges. Thank you for that.
I was interested to note, there was a note in here that the increase ensures that we don't have the free and reduced lunch reimbursements pay for...
Subsidized.
Subsidized, right. Okay. So we have to, there's a...
There's a reason we have to raise those rates.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Thanks for the presentation. Now we move to the 2026-2027 CFAC Charge, Citizens Finance Advisory Committee.
Thank you. So, excuse me. This is generally the time when we would have had a CFAC meeting already. November is typically the month we would have our first one. And really, the point of that would be to start reviewing assumptions related to our five-year financial projections. And it's an activity that is just... It's very interesting to have experts in our community participate in a process like that. We're not quite ready to do that for several reasons. Because we don't really feel like our level of preparedness in terms of information is what it should be to actually assemble this group. I would cite a few factors. I mean, although Dr. Zelik has done a phenomenal job hitting the ground running here, he's still wrapping his arms around some things. We've got transitioning to a new auditing firm, if you recall that, which is a pretty big undertaking. Our transitioning away from the township treasurer's model is another large undertaking. And at the time, you know, we had to issue these tax anticipation warrants because we didn't really have any reliable information about when tax receipts would be realized. So we're not going to start the committee work on this for at least another month, but it's going to happen. And I anticipate that we can still have some form of a presentation in February like we typically do. I don't see a reason why we can't, at least. And then, I guess, related to the tax anticipation warrants that we had to issue last month, we have it on pretty good authority now that we don't risk having to do that a second time because tax bills were generated on November the 15th. They were printed. They've been distributed. They're due now, December 15th. And so we're now confident that we don't have to do a second issuance of warrants. So that's the CFAC update.
Thank you. In relation to the tax anticipation warrants, are we going to be able to pay those off earlier now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. If we have the right amount of property tax receipts, if we look at the cash flow again and make sure that we can obviously still pay the staff and then pay our bills, then the answer would be yes. We can do it as soon as we can.
And the one thing I did notice with these late bills is now they've moved the spring date a month later. Is that going to affect us also?
That should not be terrible. We should be okay. We should be okay.
Any other questions about the CFAC charge? Okay. Now we have the 2025 Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal.
Yeah. So I'm meeting this week with the insurance company to kind of go through the renewal, see what the increases are, hopefully some decreases maybe, but just also get to know what the coverages are. So I'm going to be meeting with them on Wednesday to go through that process and then bring it to the board for, you know, approval in December.
And currently, we are using a co-op, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand. But it's some type of co-op, yes, but I don't know how they function yet.
Bless you.
Bless you. Okay, thanks. So we'll have something more on that in December?
Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions? Now we have the 2026-2027 Calendar Recommendation.
Thank you. So the proposed calendar that the board has in front of you is the product of our Personnel Committee's work per our contract. We have a subcommittee that meets and discusses the various parameters and puts together this recommendation for the board. Based on board policy, this aligns very closely with Glenbrook High School District 225's calendar for the 26, 27 school year, specifically starting and ending within a week of 225, matching winter break, matching spring break. Some highlights of this calendar for District 34, we have three staff days before the first student day in August to attend to various professional needs, some safety training, other things we have to plan way in advance. So the first student day would be a Thursday, August 20th. We had quite a bit of discussion with the committee about the timing of the Fall Institute Day. There were some advantages to pushing it back a little bit, so we've got that scheduled for the end of October. And just because of the way various dates fell within the student week or not, it's a year where we would end before the Memorial Day holiday. So the last student day would be the 27th, last staff day would be the 28th as proposed here, and then we have five emergency days per guidelines from the state for a total of 176 student days and 185 staff days, which is based on our current contract. But I would welcome any questions from the board.
Does anybody have any questions on the calendar? We'll be voting on this next month?
Yes, we will request your approval in December.
People are already asking, so.
Yeah, so they can reference this.
Yeah.
If they're planning their trips.
Indeed.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, we'll move to the Illinois School Report Card Data Strategic Plan Alignment. Dr. Silverman?
Wait till you see this.
Wow.
I mean, a little strategic plan woven into the report card data.
Good evening. I'm going to fire up the show. Just waiting for the right connection here. Sorry, give me a second. Let me try again. All right, here we go. So we are really excited. We have lots of data to share, but more importantly, and the excitement lies in the fact that we're talking about our children, their achievement, our opportunities to grow our achievements and our instructional practices, and equally as important, the hard work of our educators, our staff. It's incredible. And while there's a lot of slides here tonight, it doesn't come, doesn't come anywhere near the incredible.
But it won't take long.
The incredible work of our staff and teachers and educators and everybody else. So here we go. I actually always prefer our vision statement over our mission statement. I feel like we're striving, we're always in a continuous improvement cycle, whether it's daily, weekly, or yearly through the strategic plan. But I really connect with our vision, and so that's why it's included here. And of course, we live, we breathe, we do our strategic plan. Tonight in particular, we're going to concentrate on these goal areas, and a lot of it will be commentary, but you'll see the connection in future meetings where we take some action on our dashboard plan. So the state of Illinois has created a designation system, and it is the criteria that you see on the screen. So basically 75% of the designation comes from what they consider academic indicators and then the 25% as school quality and student success indicators. My only highlight here is that 50% of the academic indicator is on growth. And while that makes sense for a lot of places, you'll see in our data, we have opportunity for growth, and it's something that we've been thinking about analyzing, strategizing, looking already actually to our upcoming testing season and how that would be impacted by striving for additional growth and more growth. And on the right-hand side, you can see our summary of designations, all commendable with two schools being exemplary, and it's something to celebrate for those two categories. And again, it takes just a tremendous amount of commitment and passion and energy by everybody in our system. So part of our thinking and part of our grounding and almost a version 2.0 of this process and spending a lot of thinking time with Dr. Delly and the teaching and learning crew, we wanted to wrap our heads around some essential questions. And we work, when we think about our actual lessons in classrooms, we want to wrap our heads and teach and deliver essential questions. So these three here you see on the screen, and we're going to talk about the different proficiency levels that have been administered by the state of Illinois. As you know, and it's been an annual interest of ours and something that we wish to move upon is our achievement gaps. Sometimes they're called opportunity gaps. I don't really know, just for clarity purposes, we're going to call them achievement gaps tonight. And then, of course, our commitment to such things as pre-K and then full-day kindergarten and then how that movement really spans and matriculates into first through eighth grade into the GBS of the high school. We're also thinking about some factors that we've never really talked about here tonight in this particular presentation. Student attendance, class size, and then fiscal responsibility. So really expanding our thinking just beyond learning standards, assessments, but as it was in our vision and in our mission and in our strategic plan, the whole child.
Yeah, one of the things we didn't want to lose in our presentation about the data is how we look at all of our learners, and this is something we've spoken to the board and to the community about, and that is having our learners be this list of items because it doesn't specifically come up in an assessment, but it is when we talk about our students when they get to high school or when they get to college or beyond, having these core components is something that we value as a district. So when we're talking about data, we're using these as well as the assessment data to talk through what we want out of a student. And that is both for our learners and for our, next slide, and for our educators and making sure that they are curious and creative and empowering our students to be the same.
So we're going to jump into our actual report card. These are going to be screenshots, but if you wish to dig deeper, it's illinoisreportcard.com, and it's a live site now. It went live October 30th. And there is just more and more data every year that the state of Illinois is tracking within the report card. When it's pretty stable, I'm just going to kind of reference that, and all of these data points relative to us are stable from last year. Now we are looking at the 24, 25 fall to spring data set. This year brings us into a new sort of criteria set that we'll report on next November, but this is from last year, the information. Similar with our staff, our teachers in particular, all of this is stable information. When it's statistically significant, we'll point that out, but all of this is less than 5% movement, either a positive or in the other direction, a negative. Same thing with our administrators, stable, and then there's some support personnel that you'll also see along here, but also very consistent information year over year, in particular last year as well. So let's jump and talk a little bit about absenteeism. We felt like this is the most interesting data entry point. And if you looked at the report card, there are different types of absenteeism, truancy, those types of areas that the state looks at. But this is universal, and so you can see the percentage of students who miss 10% or more, and that is with or without a valid excuse. And so we find that interesting. Just some quick research points here. And you also see that our data, we want this to be as low as possible. And you could see last year we were at 12.3% of our children were in this category. But as of course you know, missing 10% of school a year, it's about 18 days, is enough to cause significant drops in achievement. And again, this is what research will bear out. Also, as we know, the relationship is cumulative. Absences in early grades predict lower academic performance in later grades, even if attendance improves. Regular attendance ensures continuous exposure to grade-level instruction, practice, support services, and students really can't make that up. It's just a gap that's very difficult to pursue when you're talking about really over 10 days, 15 days, 18 days. Another long-term in middle school and high school, chronic absenteeism is one of the top early warning indicators for course failures, disengagement, and at the high school level, dropout risk. And again, it's something that we think through as our children move into the high school and we track them that way. Attendance gaps often mirror achievement gaps. Improving attendance can be a powerful lever for equity, and again, we have achievement gaps. We've had them for years, and again, it's just a more holistic, whole-child view of looking at this. And even small indicators, you could see some of the best years, you know, now 2020 was COVID, that's.
It's a great year.
Yeah.
We.
Everybody was present.
Everybody was present.
But really, I think at least to pursue a single-digit number versus a double-digit is something that we're striving for.
Yeah, I would say also that this is something that's not just unique to Glenview, and I'll give an example. My daughter missed her very first day of her sophomore year of high school last Thursday, and the second that she missed it, the next day, the high school sent communication to us as parents about the importance of being at school. Now, she's missed one day this year, and it triggered that immediate communication. So we're not unique to it, but we're looking at how do we help educate our parents about the importance of being in school all the time.
So, oh.
What'd you say? Not the first day, but high school's a little different in terms of they track it by period too, and so it triggers a number. But it is important for us, we're not at that level yet where we're triggering it on the first day, but I do believe it's one of the things we're talking about in terms of increased education on the importance of how many days and then educating parents on actually how many days, because you can lose track. Your kid's sick once every other week, well, that would already be six times, and six times right now is the trigger for 10%.
There are emails that are generated.
Correct.
That we get.
Those emails are fantastic.
Oh.
I've talked about them with other districts as well. They explain what they put into context. That's a huge, there's a huge learning curve around attendance because 90% in every other scenario is an A, and we think of that as a good thing. And that's actually really low attendance. And these emails go out to parents a quarterly basis, I think, explaining why it's important to be in school, how many days your kid misses.
Monthly. And everyone gets it. So even if your child is 100% in school, everyone gets it. Do you know where we're at right now for the year?
We do.
Yeah.
Where are we at?
We're at 9%.
Some buildings are.
It's like 9.2%.
Yeah. And actually, we have a leadership meeting coming up on Thursday, and we're going to dig into the data and talk about it as a end of trimester point.
Yeah, there is some interesting things that we have to discuss from a state management level in terms of kids that are absent a lot, like, because a lot of districts, this is just a technical thing, unenroll them.
Yeah.
Because you have a certain amount of days, after 15 days, you unenroll them, now they don't, there's a whole bunch of stuff. We're just trying to get kids to school, not play the game, and so right now, we're at that level.
Is this, are there certain grades that it's worse?
Yes.
Answer yes.
Yes. All right.
So just to add, without, I'd probably not rather unpack this, but there are also some contemporary circumstances that are at play here that are keeping some children out of school.
Okay, so when we move into per pupil operational expenses or instructional side, we realize that District 225 and most recently Glenbrook South, I believe, has been isolated as one of the best high schools in the state, in the country. Yeah. And.
They're our students. That's great.
Yes. And is really exciting and amazing and something that should be celebrated. We want to stay competitive as possible within that structure of becoming one of the best high schools in America and our sincere commitment to, again, the matriculation process, starting in our pre-K program all the way through eighth grade. And some of that, honestly, you know, the board is very well in tune, and you've brought this up and processed it in other public forums, the financial element to that. As an administrative team, we are very grateful to your commitment and to the community's commitment, but these are just data points for us to process and realize that when you just look at our feeders only, now the addendum report has a broader lens with some other districts that we find either size or demographic-wise comparable, but, you know, we just thought it would be interesting to share and talk through this a little bit tonight about the financial aspect.
Well, these are districts our kids will go to school with.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to class size, which again is a topic that you can dig deep into, but one area of instruction to relate to class size, so there's sort of the macro level where it's just total class size. And again, we've highlighted in this particular slide, the class size for our feeders. The addendum has more information about class size, but certainly when we're doing whole group instruction, you have that aggregate together. But we are committed to small group instruction, rotational instruction, different types of deliverables in terms of how we confer and give feedback to children, and the smaller and more personalized we can make those experiences, both for the educator and for our children, the better. So while some of these class sizes are the largest or are big, another report to reference is the percentile report from ACRE, and you can see in there, they actually show a state analysis of where we reside in the state in terms of class sizes. So, you know, we try to make a large class size as small as possible through our instructional model, but some days, you know, a large class size is a large class size, so just to share that. Okay, so let's dig into our achievement data and also our social-emotional data, and we use these particular assessments, starting with MAP, then Ames Web, Panorama, when we'll talk a little bit deeper about IR, ISA, and then access, we're also going to touch upon tonight. So one change that we're going to hone in on, and you'll see what has occurred with our data. The state of Illinois, over the last couple of years, has come to the determination that our levels of achievement relative to other states, that's what they determine, and they benchmark against the national assessment. So there is a national assessment, it's been going on forever, and in fact, we'll have the experience, two of our schools will be part of that this spring. But our level of basically meeting on the national test, and then when you compared that to state levels, it was completely misaligned. And so the state of Illinois is considering sort of right-sizing the proficiency cut scores relative to the scaled score of the IR and the ISA. So they did that, and then they also went from a five-level system to a four-level system. It used to be exceeds is what was the highest, and then meets, and then there. So now we have basically above proficient approaching. For the purposes of being able to talk about this, we're basically going to be concentrating on children being proficient or not proficient. Oh, and I missed the strategic plan connection. I apologize. That's right here, thanks to Becca and my notes. So the strategic plan connection is review reflect on the proficiency levels of IR, ISA achievement indicators, making adjustments to school improvement plans as needed. Making adjustments to school improvement plans as needed. This is actually a tactic for Objective two point one, which is each school year, students and all student groups will show an increase in growth and achievement on available assessments. Okay, with that, let's dig in a little bit to our data. One thing we can't do in terms of proficiency and pure achievement is compare to previous years because the rules have changed and the guidelines have changed. And so this is an isolated one-year-on-the-top. That's our number of children that are proficient, both for IR and the DLM, which is the alternative IR assessment. So let's call seventy-seven percent or seventy-six point nine percent of our children are proficient from last year on the English Language Arts Assessment. And now, that is substantial growth from the twenty-fourth school year. But again, we can't compare, they're apples and oranges now because the cut scores have changed. The scale has not changed, but it's the interpretation. The growth, though, is indeed based on a scaled score. It's cohort growth. So let's say I'm a fourth grader. I received a scaled score of seven thirty-five. I then fall into a cohort across children of all other fourth graders in the state. I'm sort of banded together. Then we all move to fifth grade. I take IR again. And then my growth is completely normalized. And it's relative to the growth of my peer group. And so the data basically re-receive is whether or not you made growth above the norm. That's kind of the growth process. Parent reports will show where the child was specific to their little cohort group in the first to the ninety-ninth percentile. But for our purposes here, we're in the fifty-third percentile in terms of growth. The optimal scenario is to be above the fiftieth, which in essence, we're working towards such things as our achievement gap. We're growing faster than the state norm year over year. It's similar and you can see where we've had more, where we've had less. Okay. Here's another category in space we've been, I've been talking about it. These are the categories that the state of Illinois provides. And we dig a little bit deeper into some other student groups and some other demographic information. But you can basically see here, the, the top line, if we use low-income and non-low-income on the upper left-hand side, the non-low-income is the isolated group of children that are not identified as low-income. And that is their proficiency score. Let's call that, I don't know, eighty percent or eighty-two percent. And then the low-income group are the children that are categorized as low-income and that they're isolated. And then that's their proficiency level. So the gap is the difference between the two. That's how that works. And when you, when we rely on the state, we're assuming the data's accurate, that they've pulled the different groups out to make this such as you see it here. Okay, I'm gonna move on to math. So here's our proficiency for math. And you can see we're at sixty-two point nine percent proficient. And that's, again, isolated. We can't compare to previous years. Again, it was a jump from the past years, but it's a different scale. And then you could see growth is at forty-eight percent. So after just proclaiming our achievement, I mean, I'm sorry, our growth expectation is fifty. I'm gonna editorialize here and just insert some things that we've been thinking about and my colleagues may as well. We're looking at everything. We're looking at the whole experience of the child and the whole experience of our educators. I will say, it was rapid-fire, the way the calendar happened last year. And so coming out of January, where many children are taking the access tests that Raquel will talk about a little bit, things on the calendar were truncated a little bit. Where we kind of sped through. And there wasn't as much breathing room as we'd normally like to leave some space between the Illinois Science Assessment, which happens in March, and then the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, which is in April. And so basically, we're almost going back-to-back. And, you know, it just, it's just the way it happened. Again, on our leadership meeting coming up, we're gonna be much more strategic about trying to space out and leave some more days and weeks between those tests. We also program historically math towards the back end. And it's on the, if there's a test that's gonna maybe be in the afternoon or something, we prioritize English Language Arts over that. Some of it is the stamina of the reading, all those types of things. We're gonna try to work with that and maybe flip it around and prioritize math. And I know that might be reaching for things, but these are eight-year-olds, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds, taking a lot of tests in succession. So we're just thinking about everything.
Yeah, we just, as Matt shared, we've already started the basic exploration into the data by grade, by population. And we could theorize a bunch before we even looked at the data, like, oh. And then it gets thrown off right away. We're like, well, that didn't come true. So we're really trying to work with the leadership to figure out, not just what happened, but what we can do now in terms of helping to, because the focus is knowing what you did, but really it's on what are we doing different now to expand our growth so that this year we don't experience the same level, dependent on the grade level, expectations?
We also brought in a new fact fluency intervention program that we have more and more children every day. Again, that's something different and new that we're, that we're gonna see. And if you remember, last June, we had a math update presentation. And there was one particular PD in their building thinking classrooms. And in the moment in June, we didn't have a real clear plan for implementing that in terms of PD. And we do now. And so each middle school staff, math staff, is gonna have a full day of the building thinking classrooms, which again, not necessarily aligned directly to test-taking, but it's, you saw it was an exciting kind of approach to some math instruction. So, we are, we are thinking and processing everything and, and we're doing it as small teams and then the big leadership team. Okay, here is our achievement gaps for math. Again, you can use the same exact logic, the way it works. So the top group is an isolated group. And then the bottom group is what the difference is in terms of isolated achievement levels. Our Illinois Science Assessment also had a proficiency level change. Actually, so for IR, the criteria was lowered to be able to be proficient. Science was raised. And so our proficiency, although again, it's apples and oranges, changed a little bit, a little bit lower here. But again, the criteria changed. This is a fifth-grade and an eighth-grade assessment. Bless you. And so we had to start fresh, start clean. So this is last year, the number of children that are proficient on science, seventy-two point two. This also is a connection point in terms of the strategic plan, which is review, reflect on, and prioritize IR ISA achievement indicators based on our levels of proficiency. Making adjustments to school improvement plans is needed. And the tactic, again, is each school year, students and all student groups will show an increase in growth and achievement on available assessments. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Raquel at this point.
So let's take a look at our English- Let's take a look at our English learner population over the past several years with some context for the numbers. From twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five, District thirty-four's EL population has remained fairly steady, making up about sixteen to eighteen percent of all of our students. This reflects Glenview's longstanding vibrant multilingual community, supporting sixty-five languages this year. Where we do see some short-term changes is the number of newcomers that we've served over the past few years. Those are students new to the United States and learning academic English for the first time. These numbers can vary from year to year and it can also influence our overall EL percentages in the short term. So for example, in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four school year, we had a surge of a hundred and three to a hundred and six newcomers, which contributed to higher EL percentages in the twenty-three, twenty-four school years. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, the number of newcomers dropped from seventy-two to fifty-four, helping to explain the slight dip in how many EL students we currently serve or served last year. Every January, students who qualify for English Language Services have to take the state-mandated exam called ACCESS. This test measures the English proficiency of students across four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Each one weighs at a different percentage for an overall composite score. Reading and writing at thirty-five percent each and then fifteen percent for listening and speaking. Listening and speaking are the first two language domains for students to reach proficiency. And then reading and writing are the last two proficiency, domains that students would become more proficient. In Illinois, students are expected to reach a composite exit score of four point eight within five years. However, research shows that students learning another language typically show proficiency up to needing ten years, meaning that our high school counterparts would be the ones benefiting from the actual proficiency reached. At the September is the multilingual department meeting. We were notified that they are reviewing the exit criteria, much like they did with some of our other exams, to better understand if this really is the correct cut score for showing proficiency. They looked at actual student profiles of students still identified as EL, especially at the high school level, who could not pass ACCESS but were maintaining GPAs over four point oh in multiple AP courses. But they could not pass ACCESS. So they are, they see that there's a huge discrepancy in what students are able to demonstrate in the day-to-day versus through this exam. So this summer, they are convening a group of educators and experts in terms of EL proficiency. And they will be identifying new criteria, the cut score ranges for each of the domains, and then potentially establishing some new, a new cut score that would not go into effect until twenty twenty-eight at the soonest to meet and align with the newer EL standards that were put in effect in twenty twenty. So our kids will be taking a new version of the test that aligns with the twenty twenty standards this year. So the exit rate that you see here in red there, four point eight exit criteria, we do believe that it can, you know, we, you see more kids leaning to the right of that line as the years progress, especially post-COVID pandemic. And we attribute some of these successes to the commitment we have for co-planning and co-teaching. We do not believe in pulling students out to provide them the service. We want them to stay in the classrooms as much as possible and so that they are with their peers. We've heard that time and time again, the parents want our EL students to be, to be in the classrooms with their leg peers. And we have worked to better align services to provide people who are bilingual in those languages to help with the acquisition of shifting kids from their home language to acquiring English at the same time. And also working very hard to make sure that all communication is provided in the home language so that parents understand what's going on at school and how they can further support. Please also keep in mind that students who are new to the states are also required to participate in this exam. And it is academic content that's being tested, not social language.
Okay, quick update on NWA. While I don't have to go over what NWA is because we have been using it for so long, we do want to reiterate some of the changes that took place. So the test, as you recall, in the past, was focused on kids would continue to get harder and harder questions no matter what grade level they were. It would just keep, continue to go up. They've changed and altered the test where it still gets complex, but the questions are prioritized around their grade level and the standards that are required in that grade level. So it's slightly different, but still with the progression that you're going. So the RIT scale stays the same. It's just, wanted to let everybody know that that was part of it. In June, we talked about math a little bit. We got into a conversation about the norms and how they looked a little different and they hadn't come out yet. I know we've updated the board previously, but they did come out in the summer. And we have worked with the norms as it relates to the data from twenty-four, twenty-five so that we can project moving forward how that would look. So when you go to the next area, and I'm gonna fly through these slides because they, what they do is they provide you an opportunity to look at what our growth is. As Matt shared earlier, we look at, at a minimum of having fifty percent being, if you're not at fifty percent, you're actually decreasing your growth because fifty percent is the normed middle. So anything above fifty is, is going to be that way, no matter what achievement level you're at. However, if you are at a low achievement level and you're making above fifty, it's the only way to start closing that gap. If you're at a high level, there's still you matching the norm group that you're with and making achievement. The expectation may be smaller for your achievement than maybe at a lower RIT level. To the next one? And just as a tie to the strategic plan, going back to the first one, you don't have to go. This is obviously directly tied to the strategic plan. I think it's tactic two point one. All buildings, staff, and grade levels will look at student achievement and look at NWA and helping to set growth expectations for students as we move forward. This is an opportunity to pull out when we talk about closing that gap. This represents different sub-populations as an example of areas that we're looking at and then working with those departments to figure out how we can help improve the growth in any particular area if required. This is, again, another group into our gifted area, that how they fall out. Obviously, you see that achievement is high. Growth is above the fiftieth, but it doesn't mean that everybody in the group is making growth. So how do we help work with students at all levels to continue that growth component? Ideally, we would love for a hundred percent growth for everybody. We know statistically that's almost impossible. But that is always our goal, is to get as many as possible in there. Here is an example of our trend information on where we fall with reading growth. Go to the next one? This is using our ethnicity. Everything relatively moving at the same. We're looking at how do we close the growth gap between all of our ethnicities, but they all are either going up or down in the same group. So as a whole district, they're modeled, there's no one group necessarily flying off and offsetting the whole group in our data. The RIT relatively staying the same. This is a chart that we have in Power School. It's actually one that buildings have for their classrooms. It was in NWA. We took it, put it into Power School so that we can look at it. Our goal, just as a reminder, is to have high growth, high achievement. So, to have that top square at the highest level possible, we're gonna see, when we look at math, that we may have had high achievement, which our kids are high, but low growth, which is the opposite of what we want. If you have low achievement and high growth, those two, that is also the only way that we're going to get over the achievement gap is if you're at the high growth. Does that make sense? This is for math. Again, we have students making it. We are actually at a higher achievement level. Go to the next one? If you remember back to reading, our IEP and math is higher in both these areas. Our growth took a slight dip in comparison to twenty-three, twenty-four. It was at an all-time high at that point. But we're still looking at how do we maintain where we're at and go back up to that area? and go back up, um, to that area as part of that previous conversation, looking at IAR. It's the same conversation, what is happening with math? We are at a high achievement level, but where is our growth? How do we maintain that growth and it, expand upon it so that our achievement is maintained or increased? Same thing here, um, as we shared with, um, reading, and same thing with the RIT. What I, um, shared earlier is you do see an area here where we have cause for concern in the sense that we want to make sure that our high achievement, low growth area, um, when you see a positive number there in difference, that is not a positive side. You want, you know, the up above at high achievement and high growth, where we decreased from last year by five point five, um, points, or overall in high growth, we decreased by seven point seven points. We want all those to be positive numbers. And so we're gonna, again, dig into what that looks like, why that might be happening. Matt spoke to a few things around testing. You know, the spring component is, we do test a lot, a lot, um, for kids. We have a population that gets hit a lot. Our eighth graders may or may not be as engaged at times. Um, our third grade, you know, like you have a lot of things that we have to figure out how to address those because everybody across the country is dealing with the same thing. So this is all in comparison to them. Scott, you were gonna share something.
As you approach higher and higher achievement, do you, I would expect to see lower growth as it occurs.
You would, the issue is that-
Is there a way to, like, logarithmically measure that growth so that higher achievement doesn't necessarily hurt your growth rate?
So it's a tough conversation because you're being normed against other students who are also at high achievement. So the new norms take into consideration if a population, what they expect out of that population based on the norm. So if a student, I'm just gonna use a number, um, if a student was in the ninety-fifth percentile, when they take the test, they're being normed against those same students who are at the ninety-fifth for growth, meaning we are each being asked to grow the same amount because our RIT is the same. So we're each being in the, that number, sorry, that number is a smaller number than you would have if you're at a lower RIT. So a student who's at the fiftieth percentile may be asked to grow ten RIT points to grow because they expect, based on the norm, that you would grow more. A student at that high achievement, they've already considered that kids aren't going to, to your point, aren't going to grow, there's not as much area to grow. The thing that we're gonna have to look at is with the new test, and it being grade level specific, does, we'll have to look at how much does that cap a kid?
That it could cap growth.
It could cap growth if it's not extending it beyond. So we have students who may be taking geometry, and it's not testing geometry, and how do you take that into consideration?
Okay, we're gonna move on to AIMS Web. The strategic plan connection is buildings analyze and respond to fall, winter, and spring AIMS Web data to drive building, classroom, and student goal setting are reflecting for AIMS Web growth, and the tactic objective is each school year students and all student groups will show an increase in growth and achievement on available assessments. So this is a different report that I'd usually include in this presentation. This is fall, winter, spring, similar to how MAP is presented, um, growth compared to the norm group. We are the solid line, and you can see for early literacy for kindergarten, this is a composite score, so it's subtests that are administered to each kindergarten. We did not grow, um, similar, in similar rates to the national norm. To tie it into, um, a sidebar that we're working on, and we're gonna bring to you, is an instructional element of our day, um, and that is specific to phonics and early literacy development. And we, we've known for a while, now we're taking action, that that's a core change in our instructional programming we need to make, and, and we're gonna do so, and we do expect this to, to, uh, change as well, once we implement our new phonics programming. Math, you could see that we kind of, with the fall to winter, grew more, and then sort of leveled off in terms of the norm group. And again, this is early numeracy, it's, uh, math subtest, little mini tests for little mini children, uh, that we administer fall, winter, and spring. Moving on to first grade, same setup and same concept. And now this is a different group of children, so this is all, this isn't cohort across years. So this is now a first grade, and similarly, they, um, you could see on the top is early literacy growth, and they did, this group did grow, uh, more than the national norm. And math, you could see the bottom, early numeracy started below the norm and then made gains above as the spring came along there. And then second grade, similar to first grade, where, um, children, our children started fairly close to the national norm in the fall, and then made great growth relative to winter and spring compared to the norm group. And then the bottom is early nu, or I'm sorry, is math, um, and it's a math assessment, um, and different components as well for second grade, and you can see how the, our children grew relative to the norm group over the years.
That's our first group of students who had all their kindergarten credit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, yes, yeah. So yes, that is a nice, long-term indicator of that time.
All right, so we're gonna shift over to some social emotional data. We do use the Panorama survey to assess, um, in screen students in the area of social emotional development. Um, Panorama is a survey, and so at the earlier grades, the teacher fills out the survey because the kids are too young, and it's teacher perception. And then in the older grades, the reading is calibrated for the different levels, but those students fill out their own survey. And so the Panorama does contain about six to seven different domains in social emotional functioning, but we've been tracking two, like what we call power domains, supportive relationships, and, um, emotional regulation with you all for the last couple of years to see, um, how our kids are doing. We felt those domains were more powerful. They align very closely to our strategic plan when we're talking about cultivating a positive environment from the beginning of the school year, maintaining it throughout the school year, demonstrating increased engagement and learning, and just that goal that we always have of that belonging and well-being. Um, that's important, and we know the intersection is really strong between social emotional, um, functioning and academic achievement. And so for supportive relationships in the K-two level is, again, teacher perception. Um, this is a scale where teachers rate their students in, um, different areas. They answer questions and they rate, I almost never see this in this student. I see it once in a while in this student. I sometimes see it in this student. I frequently see it in the student, or I almost always see it in the student. If a student receives a rating of frequently and almost always, those are considered favorable responses, and that's what's indicated on the screen. So this fall, ninety-two percent of the students received favorable because they were rated, um, either almost always or frequently. Oftentimes, at the beginning of the year, it is a little bit lower because teachers are still working hard to develop those relationships. Students are working hard to, um, understand their peer group and where they fit in. And oftentimes, we get more sometimes responses in the fall, and that's kind of like a neutral that doesn't count as a favorable response. But it's remained pretty steady, um, since fall twenty twenty-four when they added this metric. Three, five, again, I mentioned is a student self-assessment. The reading levels, uh, are calibrated for that developmental level, and kids are asked, do you feel supported in the school with adults in the school, your peers in the school, and adults outside of the school? And again, as you look at the trend line, um, it always is a little bit lower in the fall, and then as, um, the students develop their relationships with their peers and their teachers, you see it, um, move up a little bit. And so if you look at the fall over the years, it has remained fairly stable with the amount of favorable responses that students assess them in, themselves in. Six, eight, similarly, um, you see the same. These are basically yes and no. Do you have an adult in school who you can rely on, yes or no? Do you have an adult at home who you can rely on, yes or no? Do you have peers that you can reach out to to support you, yes or no? So similar trend line. The second power standard that we identified is emotional regulation because if you're not regulated, it's hard to, um, be engaged in your learning, and that is a very big part of our strategic plan, engaging our learners. And so this is, again, K-two teacher perception. You can see this fall, it was at eighty-two percent favorable. Again, the fall is usually at a little bit lower, and the teachers work so hard to develop the relationships, and you see it spike in winter and spring, and we're hoping, again, um, to see that spike. Three, five, the student self-assess, and they, again, talk about whether or not they feel that they can kind of, I have a couple of the questions. Can they get themselves out of a bad mood if they're in a bad mood? Can they control their emotions? Can they stay calm if things go wrong? So they're kind of rating themselves, and this is that, like, scale. I can never do that, I can once in a while do that, I can sometimes do that, I can frequently or almost always, and a favorable response is students saying that they can frequently or almost always, um, kind of regulate those emotions. And so this is one of the lower, um, metrics that we see. You saw the other ones were high eighties and nineties. And so these are always, um, areas that our teachers work hard on, our clinical team, they really dig into what's happening with individual students and how we can support them, how we can build our system to include skills groups or more activities involving connections so they feel that they can do that emotional regulation. Sixth grade, similar. Sixty-eight percent favorably feel that they can kind of dig themselves out of a bad mood and, um, react to frustrating situations appropriately.
Okay, so this is just a short list of ways that we are working with our children, our families, our educators, a full administrative team, to increase achievement, reduce achievement gaps, and expect and commit and put all of our passion in maximizing the growth of every single child. And, and every day, like, again, that's what our strategic plan talks about, and that's what we live and do. And with that, are there any thoughts or questions from the board?
Anybody have any questions?
Um, so first of all, thank you for putting this all together. Uh, this is a really great picture of how all this progress is going forward. Did I hear you talk about coming back in some of these topics with a deeper discussion once you've had some more time to work through the data and talk about, you know, specific things we're going to do, or looking to do correlations, that kind of thing? Is that in the plan?
Yeah, I mean, our, our focus is to be able to dive and, and come back with hopefully some more informed, um, rationale behind some of the changes, good and bad. Like, if there's something we did well, we want to be able to capitalize on that, depending on the grade level. And if there's areas where, like math, where we saw some areas for potential growth, that what, what were those, and, and how do we figure it out? It's going to be, um, conversations that we've already started, um, with specific buildings, um, or grade bands, not individual buildings, whole grade bands.
I, I think I also recall that there may be some board interest in-
Yeah.
Um, some having, having some, um, educational achievement ambassadors, if you will. Uh, perhaps get together with the teaching and learning team and myself and, uh, really unpacking and triangulating some of these a priori's that we sort of started with at the beginning of the presentation. So we think that too, I think would be an outlet that would be beneficial for the board.
Absolutely.
Anybody else with any thoughts or questions?
I just have a comment. Um, first, I think the, thank you for putting this all together, it's really helpful to see. This, a couple of quick notes, the, um, chronic absenteeism, we spent some time talking about, and while there's room to grow, uh, by nationally, but we're looking at nationally, we're doing very well. Um, I think it's worth probably digging a little more to the teacher attendance data as well, though. Um, if you flip that from the sixty-six percent, it's just forty-four percent that are missing ten or more days. Um, one highlight, though, uh, you know, those are the smaller student population for us, and through, in grades three through eight, the students, uh, who are meeting growth in math, our black students were the only subgroup that was increasing and showed growth. And so I thought that was something worth noting there. Um, and, uh, I also think the connection of the AIMS Web data to full day K is a really powerful one, and one we should probably make sure more people know about, um, how important that transition has been for our schools and our communities. Uh, so just a couple of quick thoughts there, thank you.
Especially as those students continue to matriculate to higher grades.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
Thank you.
Julie, or Jessica, do you have anything?
I just had one question because I can't remember. The, the phonics pilot, is that happening now?
Yes.
And then it will be, uh, piloted this year, and then hopefully next year, that will be-
Fully implemented, yes, yeah, for K through three, actually, through third grade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, um, a contractual cap on class size?
No.
Actually, I have one more comment, sorry, Scott.
Go ahead.
I forgot this one. Um, it might be helpful, uh, if you're not, not now, over time, maybe when you do your, uh, other analyses, or maybe you already do, to see the, uh, EL's data by cohort over time as well, rather than seeing it, you know, like twenty twenty-four against twenty twenty-fives. But I'm curious as to how long it takes someone who's at entering or beginning stages to reach exit stage, and what that looks like for individual cohorts of students over time.
But overall, this is a good report.
Card.
So, thank you. Continue, excellent work, and let's raise our growth. Everybody good?
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move along to audience comments. Do we have any audience comments?
We do not.
We have our reports section, we have the number one FOIA report, the number two monthly budget report, number three student enrollment report, number four school improvement plans by building, and number five school report card data addendum. More data for us, thank you. Any questions on our reports? Um, other business, I do want to bring up that True North is having a meeting this Wednesday. Uh, we are going to be expressing our, uh, that we are gonna be leaving, and we are gonna be voting for the new Articles of Agreement. What?
Do you think they'll surprise them?
I think they're gonna be surprised, I don't know why, but, uh, and we'll be, uh, voting on a new Articles of Agreement, which will encompass us leaving also, so. Uh, if there's any questions about True North, feel free to email or call. And, uh, I think that's about it. Otherwise, this weekend, we also have our professional development, the triple I convention, and I hope everybody gets a chance to learn and grow there, too.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah, happy Thanksgiving, yes, it's coming up. Any other questions or thoughts?
I just wanted to share real quick, we talked as a board about sort of sharing a little bit more during other business about, you know, work that we're doing on committees or with, like, GF and whatnot. So Julie and I have been with the compensation committee, and, um, uh, the, everyone's been going through open enrollment, which is typical. Um, all of us do open enrollment. But, um, I didn't realize until I got on the compensation committee that, um, enrollment has been all paper-based for years. So this is a big switch, not only to a co-op, which we've talked about previously, the board is, is definitely a good thing going forward, but a switch to doing enrollment online. Um, not with, been without its challenges, you would always expect challenges with this kind of shift. But, uh, I just want to say personally, I've been really impressed by the team, um, working to help everybody get through the process, all of these. You can't, you can't, um, you know, predict every challenge that's gonna come up, both be it system, be it paperwork, be it even people's approach to the whole thing. And, uh, it's, it's, you know, it's complicated. It's a lot easier, once you're on a system, you know, in, in years from now. Uh, but this is a big change, and I've been very impressed by the team that's been working on that. And it will definitely be beneficial to all folks, uh, in the district going forward, so. Little update from that committee, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else?
And everybody has to go on and sign up, even if they're not doing it, so that will be a bit of a change as well, but-
Right, so everyone has to do it this year.
Yeah. So, it's definitely a big- Definitely a big, big undertaking, but they seem like they're doing a great job. The district team and, and our Gallagher team.
So if you're listening, I think there's still time. We're down to, I think it's less, it's less than twenty, it's, it's-
Oh, really?
It may be as few as ten or twelve who still need to, I don't know when the window closes, but-
We do know that the day that it closes, it's at eleven fifty nine. So if it's today, which I don't think it is, you're still a few hours, so.
Excellent. All right, well, happy Thanksgiving, and our meeting's adjourned.